We'll call the meeting to order. Time is 7:04 on May 13, 2025. Linda and Terry are both absent. They have notified us. And Mayor John is out of town on business, so you get me. George Glover will take care of the invocation tonight, and Troy will lead us in the pledge to allegiance.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Father God in heaven, we thank you for such a beautiful day today. Please give us wisdom, guidance in the sermon in making decisions for the citizens of Park City. Please protect our police officers and provide whatever needs our citizens may have. May we put our trust and faith solely in you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. How to do this thing? Jim?
A move that we approve the agenda.
Okay, second by Charlie?
Second.
All right. Jim had the motion and Charlie did the second for the approval of the agenda. Awards and presentations.
Sir, would you like to vote on that?
Oh. Is that necessary, really? Okay. Is there any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. All right. Now we're to awards and presentations. Dana has a couple of them for us tonight.
Thank you, Council President and Council. Yes, we do have two proclamations, and these are in celebration and recognition of two very important groups of our employees. The first of which is the police. National Police Week is May 11 through the 17, 2025, and National Peace Officers Memorial Day is May 15, 2025. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Park City Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community members. And whereas, it is important that all members of our community know and understand the duties, responsibilities, sacrifices, and hazards facing their law enforcement officers, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the Park City police officers are committed to the highest professional standards in working in partnership with our community to meet the challenges of reducing crime, creating a safe and welcoming environment, and improving our quality of life for our community and those who visit. And whereas, the city of Park City is proud of our police officers and wishes to recognize their commitment to the public safety profession. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Park City hereby recognizes the week of May 11, 2025, through May 17, 2025, as Police Week, and calls upon all community members, civic and educational organizations, to join in commemorating our law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered dedicated services to their communities. And be it further proclaimed that the city of Park City hereby recognizes May 15, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And we call upon the community of Park City to observe this day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of the fall. The second group that we want to recognize this evening are our Public Works Professionals. National Public Works Week is May 18 through the 24, 2025. The theme this year is People, Purpose, and Presence. Whereas, Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Park City. And whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals, who are federally mandated first responders, and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities that are essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Park City to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works first responders and Public Works programs. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, which is sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, the mayor and council do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through the 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to recognize the substantial contributions that our Public Works Professionals, engineers, managers, and employees make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Public Forum has one request. Wendy Winkley.
Hello, can we hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Perfect, all right. So, good evening, everyone. I want to first of all say thank you for being here. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And I appreciate everyone else who has come out tonight. So I'm Wendy Winkley. I run Store in a Wink with my father, Jerry Winkley. So tonight, why I'm here, I'm here to ask that the city attorney be asked to draft a clear city ordinance that permits towing of a vehicle from a storage facility when it's delinquent or abandoned. So, we've spoken with the Park City Police Department. We have the chief support in this matter. So, from a practical standpoint, allowing us to tow these vehicles, just like most states and other private property owners can when a vehicle is abandoned, would relieve a huge administrative and legal burden, and it would help keep our facility safe, clean, and well-run. So, as you know, under Kansas law, cities do have the authority to pass local ordinances that allow towing in these cases. But currently, Park City doesn't really have a clear ordinance addressing this issue for storage facilities. So that's why I'm here tonight, to just ask for a clear city ordinance that permits towing of a vehicle from a storage facility when it's delinquent or abandoned.
I understand, most cities do have an ordinance like that. Yeah.
Just getting more of like a clear ordinance for us with our administration. It's difficult right now to navigate. It is just a little bit more clarity on that would be helpful for us. That way, we're not misstepping anywhere in the process.
Okay. Doug, can you do an ordinance for us to look at?
Sure.
He's more than willing to.
He's more than willing.
I love that. I have some information here for you.
Okay.
You have a discussion?
Yeah. Do you have any questions for Wendy?
I'm lit up.
Oh, you're lit up. Okay, go, George.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you, is this an ongoing problem, Wendy, of the abandoned vehicles or delinquent? Or is this something that just happened? And why you guys haven't come earlier to seek this ordinance?
So, back in 2023 is when there was a Kansas law passed, KS 66-1330. So, most states do allow towing for self-storage facilities. I don't know why there hasn't been something done sooner, but it is one of those things for us where we do all of our due diligence, but it gets awkward at a freight, like a point because it becomes our responsibility as the facility to sell the vehicle. I don't want to be selling things. I would rather just contact a towing company and say, hey, you know, this person hasn't paid. Can you please get this from the property? Because I'm running a business.
This has been an ongoing problem, though?
Not... So, ongoing problem...
One or two vehicles are ongoing over several years, or...
Yes. It's been a few vehicles here and there, and it's just something that I would like to have in case this does come up again. I would like to be able to address it and not have to essentially wait several months to get a response from the state of Kansas, and then I have to contact lien holders if there is some, host a sale. I mean, it's just a lot of, you know, it's just a lot of issues and struggles and stress for me where I feel like that could be mitigated if we have something that's more clear for me to be able to follow.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie?
Wendy, just a question for my own edification. So, from my understanding that, you know, McDonald's had a car in a lot for three weeks, and nobody moved it, they would just tow it. But you can't do that because you're a storage facility? Is that what I understand?
Correct.
Oh, okay, okay.
We have rental agreements, and even though it's nine pages long, it's just not clear at, yes, okay, if someone's been in default for 60 days, I can come in, I can tow it. We don't have that clause in there. We have to fill out like a T-96-996R. We have, it, it's a process. And I would rather just be able to call a towing company that works with the state. They have their own laws, rules, and regulations. I call them and I say, hey, it's Wendy, Store in a Wink. Help me out. They get it towed. And then I don't have to worry about selling a vehicle, essentially.
Okay. Thank you.
Does this more or less draw a line in the sand for your liability? If the towing company comes and picks up that car, then all the liability for that car and anything that would happen to it from that point on goes to the tow company?
I believe so, yes. They have their own laws.
All right. Are there any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your day.
You bet. Staff report, Sean. Okay. Motion to accept the consent agenda? Charlie?
I move we accept the consent agenda. Or we approve it, I guess.
Okay, Troy?
I second.
All right. Motion by Charlie, seconded by Troy. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Okay, number... Number one, discuss and consider Parks and Recreation and Tree Advisory Board appointment. The first appointment is John Lister.
Justin Lister, sir. Justin Lister.
Justin Lister. Where'd I get John? We'll go with that. Justin Lister, all right. Is he here tonight?
Do not believe so, sir.
All right, John, Mayor John has interviewed and gave his approval for these assignments. Does anybody have any questions? Jim?
Only thing I'd comment is Justin's my neighbor, and I was happy to see he stepped up and volunteered for this. So I know him personally. He's a good guy and probably would be a great fit for this. So, if there's no other, if there's no other comments, I would, I would move to approve the appointment of Justin Lister to the Parks and Rec and Tree Advisory Boards with the term ending May 31, 2027.
All right, is there a second? Troy?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carries six zero. The next one is discuss and consider Parks and Recreation and Tree Advisory Board appointment. And this one is Casey Shun. I think Casey is here, isn't he? Would you like to come up to the... I'm sure you'd love to. So we can meet you and see if anyone has any questions of you?
Hi there, everybody. Good evening. My name is Casey Shun. I've been living in Park City for the last seven and a half years. I've got a son who's two years old. We're very passionate about parks at that age. And so, when I saw this come across on social media, I obviously put in an application, had some conversations with John, talking about our vision for Park City and building up the parks, making everything as beautiful as we possibly can and as fun as we possibly can. So, that's what kind of excited me about the, about signing up and excited to be able to have a, have a piece of working on Park City.
Okay, so anybody have any questions of Casey? Will I accept a motion at this time?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We got number nine, George.
Yeah. Well, thanks, Casey, for stepping up. We appreciate your wanting to step up and be part of the committee. I don't have any questions. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the appointment of Casey Shun to the Parks and Rec and Tree Advisory Board with the term ending May 31, 2026.
Charlie?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Okay. Number three, discuss and consider approval of a proposed change of zoning district classification from R2 Single Family Residential District to I1 Industrial District located one-half mile south of 69th Street North and one-half mile west of Broadway Avenue. Russ?
Thank you, Council President, Council members. Russ Avi, zoning administrator. This is a 10-acre site that had originally been part of a larger zone change approved by the council about a year and a half ago. It was accompanying the 80 acres immediately to the north of the property. Through some transactional ownership issues, they dropped this particular site from that original application and have come back now to, once the ownership had been settled and transferred, they're coming back in to make it a part of that larger project. Ultimately, this subject property is to be platted as Lot 1, Block 1, North Park Industrial Second Edition. That plat has been deferred until our June Planning Commission meeting to address some, some plating issues with this. Planning Commission recommended five to zero approval of this zoning applications, and the findings were made available in your packets. And I'll stand for any questions you may have on this.
Okay, anybody have any questions of Russ? Jim?
Honestly, Russ, I had no questions. I studied this and it looked pretty straightforward. So I would move to approve the zoning change as presented, which is ordinance 1210-1225.
Charlie, second. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't need to do a roll call.
Oh, yes, yes, you do.
Vote, sir.
Oh, yeah. Adam Clark, would you do a roll call vote for us? I just read that on my notes, too.
Charlie Davidson?
Aye.
Troy Hill?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Charles Swankie?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
Okay. Discuss and consider approval of site plans for Lot 1, Block E, Park Center Edition. Russ?
Thank you. This is a project that the last time I was in front of council was also part of the agenda on some financing of this apartment development. But this property sits on seven, just over seven acres, envisions 166 total apartment units, varying from one-bedroom to three-bedroom units in seven apartment buildings. Planning, the Planning Commission heard this case on April 21, had several waivers attached to this site plan review. The first was setbacks along the west edge of the subject property, going from 20 feet to 10 feet. A setback adjustment or modification on the south line of the property, where Garage B is located, from 10 feet to 6 feet, four-foot reduction, and a landscape area, again, being asked to be reduced from 10 feet to 6 feet along the south line of the garage unit, the southernmost garage unit. The Planning Commission recommended approval of those modifications in the overall site plan with one condition, that landscaping be added to the south elevation of that garage unit, which the applicant have submitted a revised landscape plan that accounts for the Planning Commission recommendation. They did not, unlike the council discussion a few weeks ago, the Planning Commission did not bring up any other design considerations or concerns about the project. There were some parking questions, and the applicant and staff addressed that. There is adequate parking. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Russ? Jim?
I don't know if I would call them questions, just more comments. Yeah, I'm probably, probably initially hesitant to approve setbacks in our nice, you know, new development being shrunken back. But at the same time, you know, I, I know, you know, our zoning and board, zoning board and appeals has looked at this and, and approved it, and I want to be supportive of them. I appreciate that the bar, the, the owner has stepped up with some additional landscaping. And on the flip side of this coin is I'd like to see the project take off. It's, it appears to be well-backed and a good project for the community. And, and so I'm just going to kind of air that. I don't know that I want to waive a lot of setbacks in the future, you know, but I'll get on board with this.
... authorizing construction of new aquatics facility. Sean?
Good evening, sir. Charter ordinance number C 39 2019 provides that the city may file with the governing body a multi-year capital improvement plan for the development of the city, including public improvements, acquisition of necessary land, acquisition of equipment, vehicles, and/or other personal property to be used. In May 2021, the council approved such a resolution, which was number 1090, or 1069-21, authorizing and providing for payments of cost of certain improvements within the CIP. Upon approval of the CIP, the city is authorized to issue its general obligation bonds in an amount sufficient to carry out such plans and associated costs. And by resolution, shall specify the amount and the purpose of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds to be issued. The attached resolution before you tonight serves as the initial authorization for improvements in construction of the new aquatics facility with a total estimated cost of $1.125.5 million. And I stand for any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, we'll accept a motion. Jim?
I, I didn't have any questions. So, I was going to move to approve Resolution 1252-2025, which amends Resolutions 1069-2021 and 1081-2021.
Okay, Troy?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. Motion carries six zero.
I did, I did, Charlie, I did have a quick question. Sean, did you say 1.125? Or did you say 8.125?
8.125.5.
Okay.
Eight million 125,500 dollars.
I thought, okay.
Sounded, it sounded like one, I thought.
I thought, yeah, I thought so. Just wanted to be clear for the record.
You got us a discount, didn't you?
That, that would be a bargain.
Yeah. Okay. Number six, discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and in accordance with such findings, paving improvement Phase 1 Briarbrook Second Edition. Sean?
Yes, sir. This item, as well as the next two, are both, all three for infrastructure at first phase of Briarbrook Second Edition. The attached petition was filed with the city clerk proposing pavement improvements to Phase 1 Briarbrook Second Edition. The petition was signed by the owners of record of more than one-half of the area liable for assessments for the proposed improvements, and therefore, petitioners are requesting that such improvements be made without notice in public hearing as required by KSA 12-6A01. The improvements include construction of pavement on a portion of Persimmon Court, Mulberry Court, Brewer Oak Court, and a portion of Hidden Lane, along with a stormwater system and drainage to be installed where necessary to serve an area as described as the Improvement District, all in accordance with the city standards, plans, and specifications prepared for or approved by the city engineer. The estimated or probable cost of the proposed improvements is $1,125,000, with said estimated cost to be increased at a prorata rate of 1% per month from and after the date of adoption of this resolution authorizing the improvements. The improvement district to be assessed for the cost of the improvements is lots 1 through 14, Block C; lots 1 through 32, Block D; Briarbrook Second Edition to the city of Park City, Sedgwick County, Kansas. The method of assessment is equally between all lots, and the apportionment of the cost of the improvements between the district and the city is 100% against the improvement district and 0% to be paid by the city. And again, I stand for any questions. On your map, it shows you where Phase 1 of Briarbrook Second Edition will be.
Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Troy?
I don't have any questions. I would move to approve Resolution 1254-2025.
Charlie?
Second. Fifty-three.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Sir, if I may correction for the rector, it's Resolution 1253 for paving.
Sorry. Then I make a motion to approve 1253-2025.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. The, the second, okay on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Got ahead of myself.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries six zero. Number seven, discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, water distribution system improvement, Phase One Briarbrook Second Edition. Sean?
Yes, sir. Again, this goes along with paving. The estimated probable cost of the proposed improvements for a water distribution system, including necessary water mains, pipes, valves, hydrants, meters, and appuances to serve the area, the estimated cost is $325,000. And again, increased on a prorata basis, with the improvement district being the same as it was previously discussed on the paving. Lots 1 through 14 Block C, lots 1 through 32 Block D.
Okay, any discussion? Charlie?
I move that we approve Resolution 1254-2025.
George?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries six zero. Number eight, discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, sanitary sewer, Phase One Briarbrook Second Edition. Sean?
Yes, sir. The improvements on this one include the construction of sanitary sewer collection system, including necessary manholes, cleanouts, and appuances to serve the area as described as the Improvement District. The estimated or probable cost of the proposed improvements is $580,000. This one has a slightly different Improvement District. It includes lots 1 through 9 Block B, lots 1 through 21, and lots 24 through 27 Block C, and lots 1 through 35 Block D of Briarbrook.
Okay, any discussion? All here for a motion? Charlie?
I move that we approve Resolution 1255-2025.
And Jim?
Second it.
All right, been moved and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Okay, number nine, discuss and consider approval of a bid tabulation and contract for monument signs, sign improvements for Park Center. Sean?
Yes, sir. A bid opening was conducted on May 1st for Park Center Monument Sign Improvements. A total of three companies submitted bids. Miracle Signs submitted the lowest bid of $148,349, which was well below the engineer's estimate of $500,000. Attached is a copy of the bid tabulation and notice of award. It is authorized and would be funded via temporary finance, followed by long-term general obligation bonds. And here are three different pictures of the three different signs. This one would be located in the roundabout, which is right at the end of Park Center Drive that's being constructed currently. That's the center of the roundabout. This one here would be the large entrance sign that comes off of 61st Street onto Park Center Drive. This would be the largest where they primarily advertise for tenants. That would be in the commercial district. And then there is a smaller one that is off of Hydraulic Street on Stewart Drive as you come into Park Center from the west.
Any questions? Discussion? Okay. Jim?
Sean, are there lighting on these?
Yes, sir, there is.
Okay.
There will be lighting down in front, as well as, I believe, the black plasma torched grate at the top is lit as well.
Nice, okay.
Troy?
If nobody has any other questions, I would move to approve the bid tabulation and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Miracle Signs in the amount not to exceed $148,349 to be paid out of the capital project funds.
All right, Charlie?
Just real quick, Sean, could you go back? I just want to look at this again. And around, is it gonna be, as far as that, the front elevation sign, is there just gonna be like grass around it? Like we have our Park City sign at 61st and 135? Are they doing AstroTurf? They just gonna do normal grass?
I would hate to speculate, because the plans have changed over the time. I do know that the sign that is coming off of Hydraulic onto Stewart Drive, the western one, that will actually be located in the median. There's a median island there, and there are supposed to be plantings, cypress trees, tall skinny Italian cypress trees there. It all coordinates with the landscaping as well. I'm just not certain on this one here whether it's going to be in a central median or if it's gonna be off to one side due to the size of the street. But yes, all three signs have landscaping associated with them. That would be a separate, this is just for the actual construction of the signs.
Okay, thank you.
I see.
Okay, we have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. Motion carries six to zero. All right, number 10, discuss and consider purchase of new in-vehicle and body worn video cameras for the police department, including installation, cloud storage, software, and related services. Chief Phil?
Mr. Council President and council members, the police department last purchased new in-vehicle and body cameras in 2021. Our current contract for cloud storage expires in September of this year, and the equipment warranties expire in February 2026. The police department and IT staff have spent a substantial amount of time over the last several months investigating options for both renewing cloud storage prior to September and/or purchasing new video cameras and the associated cloud storage. Three vendors were solicited. One is GTAC, that's the current vendor that we use. The other two are Axon and Ipro, formerly known as Panasonic. Minor differences aside, all three vendors provide relatively the same types of equipment and options. We obtained the following three quotes. Ipro at $201,512, GTAC at $224,616, and Axon at $233,277.82. Each quote includes the same number of in-vehicle and body cameras, and they're quoted for a five-year contract with a single payment upfront. Ipro quoted on-premise video storage. In other words, rather than cloud storage, it would be our own storage servers that we would have to maintain and purchase, and these were not included in their quote, and that's an additional expense that we would have to bear, as well as converting our existing data from the current vendor over to Ipro. Axon quoted cloud storage, but they could not guarantee that our existing video would transfer over with the metadata intact in a manner that would make the existing video easily accessible and searchable. GTAC, our current vendor, continued a very substantial discount on cloud storage that they provided five years ago. By remaining with GTAC, there would be no expected problems with data conversion for the large quantity of existing video that we have. GTAC also agreed to prorate our equipment warranties, which are set to expire in February of 2026, which would eliminate, so we wouldn't be double paying for warranties, because they're not expired yet. GTAC informed us that tariff increases may impact their pricing. Orders placed after May 15th of this year may have an estimated price increase of 8% to 12%. Orders placed after mid-July of this year may increase 20% to 30%, depending on what happens with tariffs. Installation of in-vehicle cameras must be performed by Superior Emergency Response Vehicles of Andover. They have installed all of our emergency vehicle equipment with a lifetime warranty, but the caveat is that anybody that works on that, they have to do any work that's performed on those vehicles, on the emergency equipment, wiring, and so forth in order to keep the lifetime warranty. Serv provided a quote of $700 per vehicle to install new GTAC in-vehicle cameras, a total of $10,500. For the fiscal impact, the expense of $224,616 for video equipment, cloud storage, software, and related services will be paid from the Special Alcohol Police Fund. And the expense of $10,500 for the installation would be paid from the general fund police department budget. Staff recommends approving a five-year contract with GTAC for $224,616 for 15 in-vehicle video cameras, 23 body worn cameras, five-year warranty, related cloud storage, software, and services. Staff also recommends approval of an expenditure of $10,500 for superior emergency vehicle equipment to install 15 in-vehicle cameras at a cost of $700 per installation. I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Charlie?
Chief, how are the, I'm not familiar with the GTAC cameras. How are they worn? Are they, there's several mounts that you guys use?
Yes, they come with a variety, kind of the standard mounts that are available for most body worn cameras. They come with a magnetic mount, also with the molly mount that goes on an exterior vest carrier. They also come with like an alligator clip. They come with a kit, each body camera comes with a kit of like, I think, all three mounts. So depending on what type of vest the officer wears or uniform, it'll mount on any of those.
Your staff, do they seem to like them?
Yes, initially, we did have some problems with GTAC in the very beginning. Thanks to the company and also to our IT manager largely, they worked out those problems, and they've been working very well. In fact, we got three of the new body cameras on loan to us. We've had them for, I think, about a month now, and they are even much superior to the ones that we have right now. So we've had a chance to try those out, and they've worked really well.
And then last question. I know there's some, in a volatile situation, sometimes the cameras don't get turned on just because they're making quick decisions. Some of the cameras have the options where if a gun's unholstered or light bars are turned on, the cameras automatically activate. Does GTAC offer that? Is that gonna be part of this?
GTAC has that with the siren lights. If those get turned on, the camera, it's a configurable. Within the software, you can turn on various triggers. But the lights and siren are part of the, they are triggers for the system. So if they forget, but they turn the lights and the siren on, that automatically turns on the camera. I think you asked a question about firearms or lasers.
Yeah, if they unholster a gun.
We don't, we don't have that in this quote. I believe that they do have that available as an option. It's an add-on.
But you're not looking at that right now?
No, we're not.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim?
Chief, I had two questions. And I apologize, I should have looked this up myself, but I don't remember. Did we have this expenditure budgeted in 2025? It was, is part of our normal budget.
What was budgeted for this year was just the cloud storage. If we were to simply renew the cloud storage with our existing vendor, but not replace the equipment, that renewal of the cloud storage was included in this year's budget, which I think was roughly $40,000.
Okay.
The rest of it was not, that might be, I hate to throw Dee under the bus and ask her a question in front of the council, but I don't know whether the Special Police Alcohol Fund is a fund that has to be budgeted, so.
And I would assume we had plenty in there to do it, was.
There was, there was a little bit more than what, this was just a few thousand dollars more than this.
Okay.
We budgeted the full amount of the fund just in case there's something that comes up, and this is, this is what we're paying it from. So it is budgeted. Not the specific item, but there are funds budgeted to be able to spend.
Okay. And then, second part of my question was just simply, I think it's the SCAC update meeting on Saturday. There was some discussion from the state level about security protocols that may be coming down on technology that we use, or strikes me, this could be used it, or could be part of it for national threats kind of thing. Is there anything, if we make this decision now, that potentially puts us in a corner on that?
No, that's a good question. And that's, the law was just passed dealing with that with drones, in fact. But GTAC, their equipment's manufactured in Taiwan, so that would not be a national security threat.
Okay, excellent. That's all I had.
Any other questions? Jim?
I'll jump in and make the motion to, I'll move to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a five-year contract with GTAC Video for $224,616 for 15 in-vehicle video cameras, 23 body worn cameras, five-year warranty, and related cloud storage, software, and services to be paid out of the Special Alcohol Police Fund, and $10,500 for the Superior Emergency Vehicle Equipment Fund to install 15 in-vehicle cameras at a cost of $700 per installation to be paid out of the general police fund. There we go, department budget. Thank you.
Troy?
I second.
Don't you glad the second one not to read that too? Okay, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries six to zero. Number 11, discuss and consider authorizing purchase of a replacement vehicle for the police department. Chief Phil again.
The police department has established a replacement cycle of vehicle replacement cycle of six years or 80,000 miles for marked patrol vehicles, and 10 years or 100,000 miles for unmarked staff vehicles. We have an unmarked 2017 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle that is approaching the 100,000 mile mark and needs to be replaced. Staff obtained a quote from Davis Moore Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram for a $2025 Durango for $43,104. This quote was based on the State of Kansas contract and is $6,500 less than MSRP. Staff also obtained a quote for $9,186.24 from Superior Emergency Response Vehicles for emergency vehicle equipment and installation. These expenses will be paid from the Capital Equipment Fund Vehicle Replacement Fund. The vehicle cost is $43,104, and the equipment cost $9,186.24. Staff recommends approval of the expenditures. Be glad to answer any questions.
Troy?
I don't have any questions, and nobody else does. I move to approve a quote from Davis Moore Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, that's a long name, for a $2025 Dodge Durango for $43,104, and a quote for $9,186.24 from Superior Emergency Response Vehicles for emergency vehicle equipment and installation costs, all to be paid out of the Capital Equipment Fund.
Okay, Jim?
I'm gonna second that.
All right, been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. All right, motion passes six zero.
Thank you, sir.
Governing body reports. Want to start with Charlie?
All right. Got a chance to go to the convention and tourism meeting last week. A lot of good stuff going on at Park City Arena, so if you're not sure what's going on, look it up online.
George?
Yeah, we're continuing to work on our Park City Fishing Derby. We're getting excited about that. A lot of people out fishing, so be more details to come. You can look us up on Facebook to see more information on it. Thank you.
Jim?
I thought it was really nice proclamations tonight. I really wanted to thank the police department, the peace officers everywhere, the National Public Works people. That was, that was really nice to observe their contributions and thank them. So that's all I have.
Randy?
I have nothing.
And Troy?
I really don't have anything other than, yeah, Public Works Police Week. I mean, that's, that's pretty important. So that's all I've got.
I think a lot of people understand the value of public works. And we've had some water breaks, several of them lately, that have put those guys working some crazy hours. And we all know why we appreciate the police. So, yeah, two great proclamations. If there's nothing else, all except in honor of John, a non-debatable motion to adjourn. Charlie?
I move we adjourn.
And Jim?
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.